I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of April 7th, 2015. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is a proclamation. Councilmember O'Rourke will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me open the proclamation up. This is a City of Santa Maria, San Maria, California proclamation. Whereas, April 12th through April 2018th will be celebrated as the Week of the Young Child. And whereas, the Association of the Education of Young Children, Santa Barbara County Child Care Planning Council, the Pacific Coast Association for the Education of Young Children, and other local organizations will celebrate by participating in the annual accreditation opening house, open house tour event on April 24, 2015. And whereas, this national effort calls attention to the need for quality early childhood education programs and services for all children and families in our community. And whereas, these groups hope to improve the quality and availability of such education programs and services. And whereas, the future of our community depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today. And whereas, high-quality early childhood education programs and services represent a worthy investment and commitment to our children's future and should be recognized for their value to the community. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria hereby proclaims April 12th through April 18th, 2015 as Week of the Young Child in the City of Santa Maria and encourages Santa Maria residents to become involved with children of all ages as an investment in our community through volunteering and child-related educational and recreational activities and services. In witness thereof, she has put her hand and signed, sealed, and delivered this, April, the 7th day of April, 2015. And accepting this is Diane Reasoner, Joyce Stone, and Karen Dominguez. Okay, girls. Come on in.
Madam Mayor and members of the council and audience, my name is Joyce Stone. I'm the staff to the Santa Barbara County Child Care Planning Council, which is a program of the Santa Barbara County Education Office. And thank you so much for the proclamation. We're really happy to be here tonight. We did bring some information for you. There's a save-the-date flyer for our open house tours. And you will also be receiving an invitation to join us for breakfast and some words about the quality programs for young children. And we hope you can join us on the morning of Friday, April 24th. There's also some information in here about the benefits of investing in early care and education. There's a position paper from Professor James Heckman, who's a Nobel Laureate economist. And he has done a lot of research about the benefits of investing in children at the earliest ages to make sure that they have a great start in life and succeed in school and beyond. And then there's another kind of talking points about that. There's some information about the Child Care Planning Council and about quality child development programs. So we're really glad to be here, not only on behalf of the Child Care Planning Council, but on behalf of the Pacific Coast Association for the Education of Young Children. Karen is the past president. I'm the public policy chair, and Diane is the treasurer of our local affiliate. It's affiliated with the National Association, which every year hosts the Week of the Young Child. Of course, we all hope that every week is the Week of the Young Child, but we do set aside this particular week in April to particularly honor young children and those who care for them. So another item in your packet is regarding accreditation. Santa Barbara County is fortunate to have about the highest rate, I think, of any county in, I haven't totally confirmed this, but certainly any county in the state and I believe the nation. The accreditation requires programs to meet very high standards of quality. Programs are accredited by the National Association, NAYC, also the National Association of Family Child Care Homes. So our open house and tours on the 24th honors the commitment of these programs to provide the highest quality care for young children. So with that, I'll let Karen say a few words about some programs right here in Santa Maria.
I'm just going to say a very few words, and I want to thank Chief Martin because he's going to speak for us there on April 24th, so thank you very much. And the centers that we have open are two CAC centers and the Bedaravia Early Learning Center, and also a family childcare home. And anybody is welcome to go visit those, contact Child Care Planning Council if you'd like to visit those on April 24th. And also in your packet is some information from our school district. We gather information when children come to school, and we've found out that children that are going to our quality centers, when they come to school, they are much more ready and prepared to learn. So it just is really important that children are having those quality experiences before they come to school. So thank you again for taking this time to proclaim this important time in children's lives. So thank you.
And Karen, where is this open house going to be held?
We're going to start at Community Action Commission Chapel, 201 West Chapel.
West Chapel.
9:00 AM, and then we'll take, we'll have a map to map it out, and we'll drive you.
Shuttle them. Okay.
Oh, this is where you have the little, all the little houses in the back, right?
Pardon me?
This is where you have all the little houses in the back?
Yes.
The little villages? Oh, that, okay. They've been there.
That's one of the accredited centers. In Santa Maria, every CAC center, Community Action Commission Center, is accredited now. So that's really exciting. Is everyone in the county?
Yes.
Everyone in the county, every CAC center. We really are incredible in Santa Barbara County for getting centers accredited. So that's a lot of work by a lot of centers, and First Five and Orphela has really done really great work on that, so.
And thank you for the great work that your organization has done here locally. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item is another proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas sexual assault is an intolerable and violent crime affecting victims and survivors, their family members, significant other, neighbors, and coworkers. And whereas no one person, organization, or agency can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but must work with others to increase public understanding of what can be done to prevent sexual assault and support the victims and survivors. And whereas North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center has led the way in Santa Maria since 1987 in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services, responding to emergency calls, offering support and comfort during medical exams and criminal proceedings, and empowering those impacted by sexual assault to chart their own course for healing. And whereas staff and volunteers of sexual assault programs in Santa Maria work gear around to end sexual violence and to support victims and survivors by providing prevention, education, and empower, and survivor empowerment information to schools, churches, civic organizations, as well as medical, mental health, law enforcement, and criminal justice personnel. And whereas North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center has set an example of how forging collaborative relationships between service agencies and organizations to serve to improve the quality of service for those most profoundly and directly impacted by sexual violence. And whereas North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center requests public support and assistance as it continues its efforts to bring real hope for eliminating sexual assault from our city. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize April 2015 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria and encourages all residents to work together to increase public awareness about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and support the victims and survivors in our own city. And here to accept the award is Linda Caderro.
And thank you, Mayor Patino and council members, for once again honoring us with this proclamation. No more, do more, no more. No more about what is going on. I think media and in all fashion has made us much more aware of the incidence of sexual assault, not only in our own city, but throughout the nation. Do more. Each of us is responsible for taking action if we are aware or if we perceive that there could be something amiss. And the "no more" at the end is so that there will be no more sexual assault. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you, Linda. Now we'll hear from Councilmember Zuniga, who will be presenting the next proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion for those in need. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, and every 90 minutes, one person dies while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. And whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others. And whereas millions of lives each year are served and healed by donors of organs, tissue, marrow, and blood, and the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age. And whereas nearly 10 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ and tissue donors are honored. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, Alice and Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize April 2015 as DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Santa Maria and encourage everyone to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards or by signing up with www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. And accepting the proclamation is Susan Friesen.
And this is for Madam Mayor Patino. Good evening. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor Patino, City Council, and especially the City of Santa Maria. And I am proud to accept the acknowledgement of California Donate Life Month and also the advocacy to the DMV. So there's a law in place that when somebody goes to get their driver's license, they need to make the decision, yes or no. Used to be that you didn't have to answer that question, but now it is, you do need to answer that. I'm a mother who experienced lightning twice. Two of my children at age six years old experienced the need for a heart transplant. And I found this out on the first Friday in October, three years apart, when both were six years old. Came from a family of five, five children, two older boys, one was at UC Berkeley, another one was at St. Joseph High School. Then I had a three-year-old, a five-year-old, and a six-year-old when this occurred. You can imagine how devastating that is. I'd never experienced anything like this in my very athletic, Southern California-raised family. Well, there's a great need for organ transplants, and both of my daughters did make it, and it's very rare, I was told, two out of 10 million in the world have two children. Usually, it's difficult for children to have transplants, or even transplants, period, because the recipient must be declared brain-dead. So you can imagine how difficult that would be, and also the parent has to decide to agree to donation of a young child, and they did have a teenager's heart. So in the United States, 123,000 people are awaiting a transplant, and another name is added every 12 minutes. Every 12 minutes. And in our city, we have many that are awaiting kidneys, that's a number one, and they're on dialysis, and many will die because they can't get a transplant. You can actually get a living transplant with a kidney. So I just want to say thank you very much for acknowledging National Donate Life Month. And to make sure that, oh yeah, I was going to say thank you very much, Councilman Boyson. Last year, he goes very...
I got my new card. I got my new card, and it's imprinted in there rather than the little dot that they used to put on there.
I know. You used to have to have a little dot affixed, but now it's actually emblazoned onto your card. So I hope everybody will think about organ donation, and all ages can donate. And Mayor Patino, you're invited April 25th to Cal State Fullerton. Last year, I did show the, present the certificate and proclamation at the Cal State Fullerton Donate Life Walk Run Event in a big kiosk with about 100 different cities. And you're welcome to attend the Mayor-a-thon, April 25th, Cal State Fullerton. It's over 100 mayors that attended that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Friesen, let me ask you a question. How old, I wasn't asking it for Mr. O'Rourke, but how old of organs will they accept?
Well, let's put it this way. I haven't heard of the oldest person, but you can donate corneas, which is a number one donateable item, skin, so I guess saggy, baggy skin might even still be acceptable, tendons, organs, a small intestine. The list goes on and on. There's even ham transplants these days. Can you imagine that?
Ouchers.
There's so many different transplants, or even talking about heads in the future, but, okay. But no, there's no age restriction. There's many different organs and tissues that could be donated.
Thank you. And thank you all for all you do in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Very much, thank you. Thank you.
For the final proclamation of the evening, Councilmember Boyson will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is a proclamation for the month of April being kite month, so a little lighter on the menu, if you will.
And you could be any age on this one, too, right?
And you can be any age on this one, yeah. They certainly would probably even use your kite for research later on if you're too old. So whereas kite flying is a family-friendly, non-polluting, healthy, educational, outdoor-oriented, and fun activity, and whereas kite flying and kite flyers from Benjamin Franklin to Charlie Brown are a quintessential part of our American culture, and whereas kites have made significant contributions to the arts, sciences, mathematics, and history, and whereas the Santa Maria Valley Discovery Museum has joined with the American Kite Flyers Association to recognize April as kite month and will use this month to educate the community about the art of kite flying. And whereas the Sixth Annual Free Family Kite Festival will be held at Rotary Centennial Park in Santa Maria, California on Sunday, April 19th, 2015, hopefully the windiest day of the year in Santa Maria. And now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the month of April as kite month in the City of Santa Maria and encourages all residents to participate in the joy and excitement of kite flying and offers the suggestion to everyone to go fly a kite. And here accepting this proclamation is Chris Slaughter and Dennis Smitherman.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, and Councilman Boyson and all the council members. We appreciate very much you recognizing the kite month and also recognizing our kite festival. This is also in partnership with the Recreation, City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department in play, along with many wonderful sponsors who make this possible to be a free family event. Last year, we attracted 3,000 people to Rotary Centennial Park. We plan to do the same again this year. I hope that all of you will come out on April 19th from 12 to 4 to Rotary Centennial Park. I also hope that you will come to the Discovery Museum. We are about a year and a half into a revitalization effort. Things are going wonderfully there, and we have incredible new exhibits that we're developing. So we hope that you'll come visit, see what we're up to, and come fly a kite on April 19th. Dennis, do you have anything else?
We have kites for all of you. We'll see you there.
The next order of business is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on this agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not printed on the agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form.
Madam Clerk, do we have speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two.
Two, thank you. Mr. Ed Cora, who is the superintendent of the Guadalupe School District. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Patino, City Council members, and city residents of Santa Maria. As the Honorable Mayor just said, I'm Ed Cora, Superintendent of the Guadalupe School District. So I'm here this evening to extend an invitation to the entire city of Santa Maria to participate in the first-ever Guadalupe Siklovia event on Saturday, May 9th, from 11 to 3 o'clock PM. The event is designed to promote health and wellness, bring community members together, and complete a revitalization project in the city. A group of eight individuals from Guadalupe and Santa Maria traveled to Cincinnati, Ohio in October to attend a community leadership conference, and we returned with the idea to organize the first-ever Siklovia event in Guadalupe. So if you're wondering, what the heck is Siklovia? So it is a three-mile bike walk or run event through the streets of Guadalupe. Everyone's encouraged to participate. There's no charge to attend, and if interested, you just have to show up at Jack O'Connell Park before 11 o'clock AM on May 9th and wear some comfortable sneakers and be ready to meet some new friends. I shared with the Honorable Mayor a video. Siklovia started in South America. They now have events in Los Angeles, Santa Barbara, and we're bringing it here for the first time, and hopefully people will participate and say, you know what, we might want to do that in our city as well. So I have some flyers here that I'd like to pass out. Mr. Apple, thank you very much for passing those out. And there's information on the one sheet that says who to contact, but again, May 9th, show up at Jack O'Connell Park before 11:00. Come have fun, walk, there'll be barbecue, music, and other things. So thank you very much.
Well, we've got two bikers here that'll probably be interested, but I went and saw the video. I hope everyone is, did we say this was going to go on YouTube, or is it on YouTube?
It's on YouTube. You type in Siklovia.
Siklovia. C-I-C-L-O-V-I-A. And it's really cute, and it gets the whole community together, and they showed it down in Los Angeles, in Boyle Heights. And people were really, really interested that it brought the whole community together, and they had a great time, so. Good for you, good for you, all of you doing that.
Thank you.
And then we have three others that I'm not sure are bikers, but we might show up.
Walk, run, whatever.
Wait, wait. It says I can bring my skateboard.
Absolutely. Good luck with that one.
I want to see that one.
And again, no age restrictions, right?
No age restrictions, free of charge. Just come on out and have some fun.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cora.
Thank you, Ed.
And then next is Gail Pratt. And Gail is on our Rec. and Parks Commission.
All right. Well, I feel among friends. I didn't know so many wonderful things were happening tonight. I also have good news. Again, my name is Gail Pratt. I've spoken to Mayor Patino, and perhaps the rest of the City Council is already aware that the Santa Barbara County Commission for Women has recently released a report, and I'm here tonight to talk just a little bit about that. I serve as the Fifth District Representative on the Commission for Women, and the name of the report that's just been released is a county-wide snapshot of gender representation on appointed boards and commissions. So by way of background, the Commission for Women promotes the well-being and equal status of women in Santa Barbara County. This report supports our mission by providing a snapshot of how women's voices are included in civic dialogue, how women participate in the governance process, and also identifying opportunities for more inclusion. The goal of the report is to analyze the gender composition of appointees to the 103 boards and commissions representing 748 appointed positions filled in Santa Barbara County. It is important to emphasize that this report is not scientific in nature. Instead, it is a snapshot with the obvious shortcomings of both accessible and accurate information, real-time turnover in these mostly volunteer appointments, and then also those filling the positions are not asked to expressly identify their gender. So the data collection occurred in May of 2014, and then we updated that information in January of 2015. So if we had a drumroll, I'd do that. The overall, overall, women represent 39% of total appointees throughout Santa Barbara County. This includes the cities of Boulton, Carpinteria, Golita, Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, and Solving. Men represent 49%, and 12% of those positions are currently vacant. The report breaks down these same categories across the region and by type of board or commission. And there are some interesting trends. I'm not going to touch on that tonight. The report, you have a copy, and I encourage you to read that. So it gives me great pleasure to extend hearty congratulations to Santa Maria City Council and the City of Santa Maria for being the only municipality in Santa Barbara County that has achieved gender parity with 49% women, 49% men, and 2% vacancies. So I think you deserve a round of applause. Again, you have a copy of the report. I do encourage you to read it. It's very short, it's very straightforward, and I think it will provide you some insight and nice conversation for you and your colleagues. I'm available to you for questions tonight or on an as-needed basis. Thank you for your time, and again, congratulations on the very strong leadership you continue to provide.
And Mrs. Pratt?
Thank you, Ms. Pratt.
I think if you would include elected officials in the City of Santa Maria, you'll note that we, you're probably in the majority.
I know. I have wondered myself why we didn't include elected positions in this report. This is only appointed, but certainly, once again, strong leadership.
60%, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for Mrs. Pratt? If not, thank you all. Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendars are approved by roll-call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the requests of council members.
Do any council members have items they wish to pull for discussion? Golly, I've got four noes up here. Okay, great. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move for the adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
Having heard the motion seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. The next item is a public hearing that's being continued to April 21st, 2015. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title? And do we have anyone to speak on that?
No.
Okay. Could you please read the title?
This item is being continued to the meeting of April 21st, 2015, to receive public comments and consider the Block Grants Advisory Committee's recommendation for allocation of fiscal year 2015/16 Community Development Block Grant CDVG and Home Investment Partnership Program funds.
Thank you. And as I said, this will be continued to April 21st, 2015.
Do we need to make a motion to continue it?
No.
Okay. Okay.
The next item is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
The City Council will consider authorizing staff to process a zoning text amendment to allow for casitas and en suites and/or second units in the R1 Single Family Residential Zone District in limited situations.
Staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Appel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, I'd like to just do a little background before we get into the actual request of you this evening. Second units, they've been around the state for a long time. The county has a number of them throughout the various communities, but going back to 1983, the state of California required local agencies to either permit second units, and that would be attached and detached unless the agency specifically prohibited them by ordinance. And the city, on ordinance number 83-1065, and, I'm sorry, that should have been 1983, prohibited second units, which was defined as having a second kitchen or a three-quarter bath with a separate entry or a detached structure on the property. So, over the years, the developers have received approvals for casitas and carriage houses and stuff within the city on some of the larger lots we have, but they've got a requirement that they not have anything greater than a half-bath, which would be a sink and a toilet. The detached structures can be used for a number of things, granny suite, bonus room, media room, bedrooms, hobby rooms, workshops, storage, a lot of different things, but they just can't be used as a residential unit. And so, the city has held to those regulations all this time. I wanted to just show you some that have been built in the city in different areas. This one is in the West Gate subdivision. It was a casita. This one actually had a fireplace in it, but it did have a separate access point coming off of the entry courtyard, but was limited to the sink and the toilet, and so it still complies with the city regulations. In Bradley Square, we have what are called carriage houses, and they were considerably smaller. I talked to a couple of the neighbors out there, and some of them use them for hobby shops with work benches, some of them use them just for storage, but they aren't large enough to contain like a media center or anything else. And then, there's a third neighborhood, the North Presker Ranch, which had some of the casitas in them as well. I wasn't aware of those, I didn't take any pictures, but those are the three basic neighborhoods in the city where they've been allowed in the past. Now, moving to the legacy project at La Ventana, I think most of you have been out there to see their new model homes and stuff. They're out by Panther and East Main. I just wanted to go over a little bit of the history of that development. It had come through originally with a much higher density, but in March of 2013, the current owners of the project, Coastal Community Builders, revised the project and submitted that to the city, discussing with us what they wanted to do out there. It took a while for them to get the plans together, and then by September, we were talking about the possibility of some type of a casita or a second unit, but they wanted to, they knew what the regulations were, but they didn't know what the market was going to be until they started building and having their units available out there. So, in July, they had already cleared their models, and so they started submitting the building plans for a compliant casita and en suite. And where I mean compliant, they were either attached, and so you could get directly to them from the house, going out from the house into what had been like the third bay of a garage, or if it was a casita, it only had the sink and the toilet, and so that was compliant as well. In December of this last year, they submitted an application for the second unit ordinance text amendment. That was the method that we believe might be the best way of being able to address the issue that they're concerned about. And so, that has already gone through the Planning Commission just this last March. Planning Commission recommended on a three-to-one vote that council direct staff to proceed with this, and so, we're bringing it before you this evening. Since we do have a project that's under construction and they've got models available, I just wanted to present some pictures. This is one of the casitas of the four models that they have on display. Very nicely done. It's set up basically like we had talked about, this could be a, you know, a guest quarters or mother-in-law's quarters or whatever, the way they have this one with the bed and the sitting area, and then a small bathroom that has the sink and the toilet. And then, one of the en suites, this is one where they have the three bays of the garage facing the street, not a swing drive, but a straight one coming from the street, and in this case, they've chosen to convert that third bay into an en suite. And you can see inside, they're kind of set up for whatever you want to use, but it also meets the requirements by just having a sink and a toilet. What the applicant is asking for is the ability to add a shower and/or a shower and a tub, which would provide more flexibility for the people that are buying these units. In most cases, this third bay is actually attached to the house, and so they wouldn't need to get permits or anything special because it didn't have an outside separate access. All the casitas, though, would require it if they did go and expand on the bathroom. So, that's kind of where we're headed. What I wanted to show now through this exhibit, first, the black arrows are showing the three locations that I mentioned where we currently have some type of casita or carriage house, and then the red arrow is showing the location for Legacy. The yellow color on the map shows all of the parcels within the city that have R1 zoning, single-family residential, and the red dots, which are too hard to actually pick out without looking closely at the map, indicate lots that are at least 10,000 square feet or larger. So, we have a lot of single-family lots throughout the city, going down to 6,000 square feet, and in some cases, with permission from City Council, they've gone smaller to still be detached single, but in this case, the ones with red marks on them are the ones showing approximate locations of those lots that are greater than 10,000 square feet. So, we had a couple discussion questions that we'd like to pose to you this evening. First, is should staff be directed to identify a way to permit a detached or separate entry casita or en suite with a three-quarter or full bath? Two options here. One, if you, majority of you say no, then we'll take no further action. If you say yes, then staff will work with the developer and come back with some options for council's consideration. So, that will be first. And then, the second question we want to discuss tonight is, does council desire the detached or separate entry casita or en suite to be applicable in limited circumstances or citywide? So, if we go limited circumstances, we would work on some mechanism that would limit it to this particular developer and maybe any future developers that came in with these requests. Or, we could go citywide on any one, any of the R1 zone lots, but with some additional criteria, one being like the 10,000-square-foot lot or more, and trying not to proliferate the three-quarter baths or full baths within the city. So, from that, once we have that discussion, we'd then be asking you to provide direction to us, and if it's recommendations to move forward, we'd prepare the materials for consideration, going back to the Planning Commission, and then scheduling it before Planning Commission, and again, making recommendations to your council, and then returning to you. So, that is our plan for this evening, and I don't know if the applicant, oh, we do have them here. Good, okay. I was afraid they weren't here this evening, so you might want to hear from them first.
Yeah, before we hear from the public, would the developer like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Jacob Grossman. I work for Coastal Community Builders. I want to thank staff very much for all their help and flexibility in getting this in front of you. You hit the nail on the head with the presentation there. We, we feel that we have a very nice product out there at Legacy, and our clients are the type of buyers who want to see a full bath. We understand that, where the ordinance came from and the idea to restrict rental units. However, we feel these, or we know that these are not rental units. We have actually in our CCNRs, deed restrictions against renting out any rooms in the development. We are just trying to build a higher-end product that competes with Rice Ranch or Lake Marie, and as staff said, the other en suites in the floor plans are, you know, happen to be connected to the house and have full baths, so to keep consistency throughout the fourth en suite and the casita to have a full bath and offer the clients, the buyers, this extra bedroom is something that they really want, and we see that. We have a high demand for, you know, elderly parents or adult children coming home, au pairs, caretakers, and such. So, it's something that will add value to not only the project, but we feel to the city as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Any questions of the council? No? Mr. Boyson?
I have a question of the city attorney. If we were to review this or if we were to approve this on a citywide basis, I mean, as I look at that map, all of us live within 500 feet of a 10,000-square-foot lot. Are we risking conflict of interest?
Councilman Boyson, members of the council, no, you are not. There is an exception called the general application to the entire community at large, so you would not have any conflicts.
Mr. Grossman, how do you enforce the CC, how will you enforce the CCNRs on these rental units? If, I mean, if they were to be, someone made a rental unit out of one of them?
That's a really good question. I'm not exactly sure. We do not have a HOA at this project, so the deed restrictions are, you know, it's part of the sales documents, so it's something that the all homeowners sign and agree to. Code enforcement from the city would be one, one way, but I don't know if we have a, I don't know if there's an internal check system or not.
Yeah, I don't know that that code enforcement would even be involved in any of that. Mr. Traheo?
He's ready.
Yes, CCNRs give the homeowners a private contractual legal obligation, so that is enforceable through the civil courts as well as through code enforcement, and typically, based on our workload, we defer CCNRs to the homeowners' associations to enforce.
That's what I thought, and you're not going to have an HOA then?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, Mr. Grossman?
I have a question.
Ms. Waterfield?
And maybe this is to staff, but what would the unintended consequences be by approving something like this? I know I have been approached by a few members of the community saying that it's going to increase garage conversions, and my response to them was, whether we have a project like this or not, has nothing to do with garage conversions. If anything, if we would do a blanket of 10,000-square-foot lots or more, it would be more restrictive to let the people with the garage conversions try to proceed with that. Would this be an extra layer for the city to use in regards to garage conversions that were not permitted?
I can answer that. Garage conversions are allowed in the city provided an applicant has sufficient room to construct a carport or an additional garage. That's what you see most often in neighborhoods as you're driving around, single-family neighborhoods, where you see a large structure, that's kind of a stuccoed carport. That's in a situation where someone has taken their garage and legally converted it and provided optional covered parking, which is required. One of the criteria that, or criterion that we would use in preparing an ordinance, if we went in the ordinance route, would be to require that the original garage is still being used as a garage. And so, it would have to be a lot where there's room, like we've shown here, where someone could actually go and detach it to, you know, if it was a third bay of a garage, fine. They would still have to have two that are still available. If they did a detached casita, it would have to be somewhere else in the yard where it could meet setbacks, so it would be more difficult to try to develop in an existing neighborhood than in one of these new neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appel. Okay, I'll bring this back to the council for discussion.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, Mr. O'Rourke.
The parking requirements, then, do those change, I guess, because I know Grossman and them, they've got three-car garages and that, and I've been out to your project, but you're going to eliminate one of those garage parking places in lieu of a casita or the other thing, and I don't, we don't require three-car garages, is that right, Larry?
Any single-family house, regardless of the number of bedrooms, is only required to have two covered parking spaces, and so that third isn't optional. It's always optional.
Okay.
And in all cases, we will have minimum of two-car garages, a two-car covered garage. The casita, since it's detached, will most likely have a, have three-car garage for the home plus two spots in the driveway, and then there's obviously street parking on the, about 40% of the lots at Legacy are over 10,000 square feet.
Well, I guess a question too, then, is, do the casitases all have to be in the front, or can they be in the back?
And many of them are in the back.
Oh, okay. And since I live in a project that your folks did a few years ago, we have a few casitas in La Ventana, and I don't have to recuse myself, I guess, because I meet the distance requirement from your project, so I can certainly participate. I guess the question is, because our homeowners' association has had the opportunity in discussion about rental casitases, whether they had a full bath or not a full bath, and that, I don't care who you are, that's like mating elephants to try and to either, I guess, prove or disprove, and then, again, a parking issue becomes, has become a problem because of a rental to a non-interested party, and they pretty much do what they do, and I don't think our code enforcement has the opportunity to go in with, you know, stormtroopers to try evacuate someone. So, I have to tell you right now that that gives me kind of a concern, although you guys do great projects, and it would certainly be grandma and the college kids that are coming home to live for the rest of their life that would occupy these kinds of places. Anyway, those are some of the comments that I had, some concerns, actually.
Any other questions, Mr. Grossman?
Pardon me.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Let me ask, Larry, you know, I know we've got a lot of 10,000-square-foot, and I don't know what the demeanor is of the council, but in order to do that with existing homes on existing lots would seem to me to be one heck of an expense to try and plum all that to put in casitases on existing lots, although I think that idea would be fair to everybody with larger lots. Now, the R2 carriage units over here by St. Mary's, those are bigger lots, aren't they? Because they allow granny flats. You know what I'm talking about? I think they're called the Carriage District along Cypress.
Those were the ones that were built back in the 30s and 40s. Yeah, they had what they called bonus rooms, and I think they're still, they worked that way. If they were built initially with, as a bedroom with a bath, then they've been allowed to continue that way, but they shouldn't, any of them should not be having kitchens in them.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, but we do have one.
One written comment?
Mm-hmm. We've received, staff has received one written communication from Joe Leon in opposition of providing direction to staff to proceed with the zoning text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, what is your, what do you want to do with this?
Well, Madam Mayor, if I, maybe I can just start, kick this off, and as much as I respect Ms. Leon's comments in regards to protection of neighborhoods and that sort of thing, I think in this case, we're, we may be a little bit much ado about nothing. We have to realize that, you know, people rent out home, bedrooms in their own home, you know, whether it's a rent out home, uh, bedrooms in their own home, um, you know, whether it's a casitas or whether it's a bedroom, I, I mean, I don't know how we can necessarily enforce that. Certainly, it gives some teeth to the neighbors.
You rent some rooms? You have rooms for rent at your house?
No. Um, but certainly, it would give some teeth to some of the neighbors if they wanted to get together and, and, uh, provide a civil action against, uh, one of their neighbors that was not utilizing these casitas appropriately, uh, even if it's not a homeowner's association. But, you know, we went through this, uh, actually on an expanded scale at the County of Santa Barbara when I was on the planning commission. Uh, this was, uh, an amendment to the residential second unit that Mr. O'Call was talking about. And so I asked Mr. O'Call to do a little research. Now, the residential second units in the county, they, they're open, uh, game. You can, you can have kitchens, you can rent them out, you can have them for granny units, whatever you want to do, but, uh, there's, there's really very limited restrictions on them. Between 2009 and 2014, there were 41 permits issued for residential second units in all of Santa Barbara County. And for the 2015 through 2023, um, housing element dates, they're anticipating an additional 57 permits being issued. So there, there really hasn't been a lot of this going on, as Mr. O'Call says, it takes quite a bit of space. Most people didn't plan this when they had their house built originally. Certainly, I mean, I live on a 10,000 square foot house, square foot lot, uh, but there would be no way that I could fit a residential second unit on that because the house and garage take up too much of the house, and I wouldn't be able to meet any sorts of setbacks that would be required and that sort of thing. I think most people with 10,000 square foot lot are, are, would fall in that category. So to make a long story a little bit longer, I'm just going to say that I would be in favor of us coming back with something to the council that would be a citywide ordinance that would permit, uh, anybody that has that availability, not just, you know, doing a wink, wink, nod, nod, this guy gets it, nobody else does. Um, I really, um, would, would rather have something that we would have available within the city, so.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. O'Call.
You, you went from question one to question two. And so I, I, I hope we could talk about number one first and get past that point, and then we'll go to question two, and then we can see how we want to structure the ordinance, if it's citywide or, or not. But for right now, I just want to see if there's a majority of council members, um, that would like us to move forward with this, this option.
Okay. So I guess what I'm saying is, my vote would be, yes, we can go ahead with this option. As far as I'm concerned, if you want to put a small convenience kitchen into these en suites, I'm okay with that, too. I mean, our whole, uh, the demographics of our society is changing. Kids are coming home, parents are coming to live with their children. Uh, we need more of these things. I think just having a restriction on the rental is, is sufficient. So that would be my comment on that.
Any other comments from the council?
Well, I, I guess.
Mr. O'Call?
Uh, putting in a full kitchen in a unit, now, I don't know, I, I guess my question would be the size of the unit versus, uh, you know, 300 square foot casitas with the full kitchen and, uh, complete bath. I, I guess the bath issue, I'm not necessarily, uh, over and above, and I, and I think one of the things is originally when you guys, meaning inland Pacific, uh, was to make this kind of a premier place, little upper grade, I don't, don't want to say upper grade, but a little upper crust, and that's why the 10,000 square foot lots, I think we kind of shoved that down your throat, you, you bit that, and then you sold it, and then you bought it back, and now the market has come back. So I think allowing you to move forward with these special expertise, but I think we need to make it kind of citywide because we can't play preferential, I don't think, here. But I, I, I'm along with Councilman Boyson here in, in, in moving forward and allowing us to look at this and.
So for the purpose of the discussion, you are also in favor of moving forward with some type of, uh, processes as opposed to telling us not to?
Right.
So, so far, I'm hearing two votes saying that we're on the yes side for question one.
Two California nods.
Ms. Sunegah?
Yes, and I was just going to try to focus us back to, you know, what we're doing is answering the questions, yes or no. At this point, we're not really talking about kitchens and other stuff.
Correct.
And so certainly, I would be in favor as well. I would be in favor as well.
Okay. All right. Madam Mayor?
At this point?
All right, thank you.
What difference does it make, right? Yeah, that's fine.
Now that we've moved past that point, then, now we need to discuss whether you want us to go back and work on an ordinance or some other mechanism that would, uh, limit the circumstances in which this could be, um, for instance, only the subdivision, or if you would want this to be citywide at this point. So, um, we can, we really can work it either way. It's just, we need to hear what direction the council wants us to do.
Ms. Waterfield?
I have a comment to make. In regards to researching this for the entire city, which I, I would be in, would like for you to come back with blanking, blanketing the city with this, but I would also like you to take a look at Sculptors, which also has the detached casitas. Now, I'm not quite sure what size those lots are over there, but they're, uh, right there next to Panther High School, Panther Drive, Pioneer High School. And so, um, there are a lot of families that probably could use this type of, um, three-quarter bathroom for their families as well.
Okay.
Ms. Sunegah?
So, but, uh, again, I'm trying to focus.
Yep.
Citywide or limited circumstance?
Citywide.
So citywide for you?
Yep, it was citywide for me, yep.
I think, yeah, and for me, just as part of the discussion, I'd like to see kind of unlimited circumstance to this project at this point, and I know that might be, you know, then we'll be coming back to staff, asking them to do it again if something else comes, and so I know it's a resource issue, but I think at this point, because we just are looking at this project, for me, it's, I went out and looked at the project, and certainly, I can't imagine anybody purchasing a house out there and then, you know, renting it out to somebody and having a bunch of just kind of like, you know, people there. They're marketing it towards executives, to doctors and other professionals who would have an au pair or a nanny and possibly a mother coming home. So I'd like to, I'm interested in this project only at this point.
Mr. Boyson?
Citywide.
Okay.
Mr. O'Call?
Citywide.
Yeah, and I will say, I would like it limited before we open the door, the floodgates, and then we're not happy with it afterwards. I would want it, want it limited at this point. And then maybe we can come back in a couple of years and see how it's going, and at that point, if it looks better. There are, there's always the unintended consequences, and you can't go back, so. Okay, anything else you need from us, Mr. O'Call?
What I'm seeing is that there are three members that would like us to bring something back that's citywide, and three outholes, too. So I think that's the direction we're, we're headed at this point, so I think we've got all we need.
You have all you need?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Ta-da.
Okay, I guess that's it. Uh, next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the city council. Your next agenda will be on the 21st of April. We have three public hearings that evening. Uh, one will be the CDBG home allocations for 2015, 16, the, uh, the, uh, federal allocation grant timelines. The other one would be the, uh, 2015, 16, uh, rate increases for our, uh, water rates. That would be a Prop 218 hearing, that'll be the first reading of that ordinance. And then the last one would be a weed abatement public hearing, identifying all the properties that, uh, will be abated, uh, during 2015. So, uh, three public hearings for the next city council meeting on April the 21st. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you. The next item is oral reports of council members. Mr. Boyson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was, uh, out of town for most of the last two weeks, but, uh, I did have an opportunity to, uh, participate, uh, on a phone conference for my, uh, Central Coast Water Authority Board Meeting on the 26th of March, and I learned all about having to post things on the outside of the condominium complex and
It's very interesting, isn't it?
Standing outside and seeing if anybody wouldn't do that. I guess that the Central Coast Water Authority doesn't get over to Maui because I didn't have anybody show up. Um, but, uh, and then, uh, also, uh, we did have, uh, by way of, uh, AB 1234 disclosure, uh, we did have C3H Policy Council on, uh, April the 3rd after I got back. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. O'Call?
Okay, well, yourself and myself, on the 18th, uh, had the city airport district, uh, meeting with the airport, and we did learn that day about the new larger airplanes and the, uh, trips out of San Francisco now. Some people are grumbling and some people are happy. Seems the destinations and the ease of getting places out of San Francisco looks to be very favorable. I know that the trip to LA seems to be shorter, but I think that place is a monster airport to be working out of. Uh, on the 27th, uh, had the opportunity to go over to the charity for the Arts Council for the library, the chair display, uh, I, I, they didn't call, I guess, my donations in the buckets. I, they must not have chosen my, uh, my name in there, anyway. And then on the 2nd last week, uh, had my LAFCO meeting, and I don't know if you, any of you have kind of followed along the Isla Vista CSD, Community Services District Opportunity with AB 3 by Das, Assemblyman Das Williams, uh, circumventing the local agency formation commission's usual, uh, opportunity to address needs of communities or service districts, uh, is bubbling more and more to the surface, and, uh, so, uh, I'll try and keep you informed of that. And then, uh, had a interesting Easter at Pioneer Park, and I have to say that it's a delightful, uh, if, if you haven't been out there in a while, they, they're restricting some of the areas around the trees because I think some of the trees were stressed, uh, out there, but, uh, delightful, big party, lots of folks, all the, all, everything was, uh, up and running. And I have to say, the two young gentlemen from the Recreation Parks Department did a fine job of monitoring what was going on and, uh, made sure there was toilet paper and towels in the restrooms, which a couple of years ago, we had to call Alex Pasada to ask him to bring some over to us. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Madam Mayor, on Friday, March 20th, attended the dinner for the League of California Cities, which a lot of us also attended as well. Um, on Friday, the 27th, excuse me, Saturday, the 28th, attended the grand opening for the CareNet in Santa Maria. Sunday, March 29th, I was a judge at the Santa Maria Talent Show at the Abel Maldonado Community Center, and that was for the Special Olympics. And I got to tell you, that was one of the best events I have ever, ever attended. It was just, it was awesome. These kids were just, they were great. Oh, my gosh, they were so great. And then that same day, I went and did a proclamation for Oswaldo Diaz, who is a young man from the city of Santa Maria. He is a very popular nationwide, uh, radio announcer, and they were, we were having a soccer game at the Santa Maria High School between two professional teams that came over from Mexico. And it was, it was very exciting, and, uh, there was just a, a lot of people there, and meeting this young man who was just, uh, amazing was just very nice. His family was there, and he really appreciated the proclamation because this is where he grew up. Santa Maria is where he grew up, and he never wants to forget where he came from. So that was just such a delight. On, uh, Wednesday, April the 1st, I, uh, attended a ribbon cutting and presented a proclamation to Marion Medical Center, and they, the ribbon cutting was for their 1.5 mile walk that they're going to start doing with their employees. So that was a very nice, um, day. And then, April the 2nd, we had a very nice tour with Shad over at the waste, wastewater treatment plant, and I learned a whole lot about muck and yuck. But it was very interesting, to say the least, it really was. Now I know where a lot of things go. And I believe, I believe that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Sunegah?
Thank you, Mayor. Along with, um, my co-council member, Jack Boyson, I attended the C3H Policy Council meeting and also the League Dinner, which I really enjoyed. The food was great. It's nice, man. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, March 18th, I, along with Mr. O'Call and Mr. Hayden, attended the Santa Maria Public Airport District Quarterly Meeting. Uh, later that day, I attended the snapshot of the Santa Maria's local economy with the Chamber of Commerce, and later that afternoon, Women's Ventures is opened up an office here in Santa Maria at Make It Your Business. March 19th, I attended SB CAG Monthly Board Meeting. That afternoon, the APCD Board Meeting. And, uh, March 20th, I was, went to lunch at St. Joseph's. My grandson goes to school there, so they had a grandparents' luncheon, and so my husband and I attended, had lunch with my grandson. Uh, that evening was the League of California Cities, Channel Counties, Division Dinner Meeting, and that was held at the Maldonado Center. And you wouldn't believe what the Maldonado Center looked like that evening, but it was very, very nice. A week later, I ran into two other council members and mayor from other cities, and they were very complimentary, and they, they talked about how good the food was, and one woman said, "I think that's the best League of California Cities, uh, meeting we've gone to." So it was very nice. And people did comment on your comment, but that's, um, and on March 21st, I spoke at the Third Annual Welcome Home Veterans Day BBQ in Celebration. March 23rd, I met with Guillermo Chavez, and who talked to me about bringing Oswaldo Diaz here to Santa Maria and have him recognized, and he was the young man Ms. Waterfield was talking about that is, um, does ra, does radio and is syndicated, and it left Santa Maria and went down to, to focus on a dream he had, and he is dreaming, dreaming his dream. So, and he was here with the, um, with the soccer teams from Mexico. March 24th is Central Coast Dinner Forum for Local Elected Leaders, and that was a forum on green streets. March 25th, I was a judge for Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club Competition, and, um, and that was from Santa Barbara County and, and Ventura Counties. That evening, I, I was a guest at the Junior High Awards Dinner and Ceremony, that Altrusa does such a great job of recognizing, and these are eighth graders that are volunteers, and I don't know how they have the time to go to school and do everything else they do and do all the volunteering that they do. Obviously, they have parents that, um, are, are, are great role models for them. March 22nd, I filmed a 32nd Airshow commercial for the, the, um, Airshow will be coming in August. Attended the Wally Semi-Annual Update, and that was on the literacy, that, um, an organization is putting together to promote literacy in the Santa Maria Valley. March 27th, I was, I was a judge for the Orchid Show in, they get all the, well, yeah, they used to do the, the Mayor of Guadalupe and Santa Maria, and they, they do mayors in San Luis County. But I, it seems like, no, there was, it seems like there was always just women mayors that they had judged. So I think it was a, it was a, it was showing partiality there, but I think we did, we had, we did have the new mayor of Arroyo Grande there. On March 28th, I spoke at the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day Event and presented a proclamation at the 50th Anniversary Celebration. March 31st, um, did the 2015, 2015 Ag Team Ag Forum Meeting that we will be having in, in February. April 1st, I attended the North County Subregional Meeting, the AEHNS Roundtable, and the Kickoff National Walking Day Tour at the hospital. I got there a little late. They already took off walking without me, but that was fine. Uh, April 2nd, went out to the wastewater treatment plant, and that, that is really an exciting tour, especially when you have someone like Shannon Sweeney, who's so excited about what she does. Um, and Shad, Shad went with us. It's, um, everyone should see that. Everyone should get a tour of that in Santa Maria, and they would, they would quit putting things down their, their garbage disposal and down their toilets.
Don't bring that up again, I'll have more nightmares.
April 3rd, I attended a human trafficking enforced labor, labor awareness training in San Luis Obispo, and this morning, did the Ben Hayes Radio Show, and that is it. And, um, the city council will And the city council will recess to closed session.
Can I make one more comment?
You certainly may, Mr. Opl.
Just to remind everyone that Serve Santa Maria is this Saturday. Abel Maldonado Center, a lot of projects, a lot of 300, 400 people show up, just, it's a worthwhile half-a-day activity. Eight o'clock, Maldonado Center, Serve Santa Maria, and you'll, you'll enjoy the day and do something good for the community.
They will have donuts and coffee there for you.
What time is that, Mom?
Eight o'clock.
You know, before, I want to close during this meeting...
Pardon me, it's nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Some of us will show up at 8:30 to serve and eat donuts.
We lost, we lost two people in our community. Sandy Carty, that was such a kind and philanthropic person, volunteered in many, many community organizations and nonprofits, helped raise funds. She also raised a large family, six kids, and, and we lost her. She's an honorary member of the Santa Maria Breakfast Rotary. She sat on the board of the Ellen Hancock Foundation, and she gave so much to this community and has raised the family that has given a lot to the community, and everyone's going to miss Sandy. I also want to mention Mary, Mary Harris. Though she lived in Guadalupe, she served on, on different county organizations that had to do with, with children, and that was her focus, was children. Very, very giving woman. She served on the Guadalupe School Board. Everyone loved her in Guadalupe, and she gave a lot to her community and to our county. So now, we are going to recess into a closed session. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the closed session item.
The council meeting... Closed session to have a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, Subdivision D, 1, Bonneville in Court versus City of Santa Maria.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is adjourned.